Call the Oatana City Council meeting to order for March 18th. Please have roll call.
Councilmember Burbank.
Here.
Rainey.
Here.
Svenby.
Here.
Trulson.
Here.
Dodson.
Here.
Schultz.
Here.
Abraham.
Here.
Mayor Kuntz.
Here.
We have all seven of the council and the mayor present.
Thanks. Please rise and join me at the pledge of allegiance. I want to welcome everyone here tonight, and I hope you all enjoyed St. Patrick's Day and are now looking forward to spring. With that, we have no changes to the agenda, so we'll look for a motion to approve as presented.
Some moved.
The motion by Brent to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Nate Dodson. Any further discussion? CNN, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved. We will move on. Next item on the agenda is 1.14, 1.1, Red Cross Volunteer Recognition. And with that, we'll go to Tom.
Thank you, Les. If I could get Mike and Iris and Dan to come forward. I have you two right over here, so you've got good shots at the camera. And Mike, I'll let you start. We're going to recognize a couple people for a board card then, and maybe give a little explanation.
Yeah, this is just an opportunity for us to say thank you for some of our Red Cross volunteers. We're lucky enough to have a lot of people that give their time. Most recently, when we had our I-35 closure because of the extreme severe weather that we had with the snowfall and winds, we asked the Red Cross to come in and set up a temporary shelter at the armory. And they just did a great job, and I got a lot of compliments from the people that had no choice. They either went off the road, or they were stuck, or they couldn't get anywhere because the freeway was closed, and all of our lodging was full. So we asked them to go through and do that. They did a super job. I know it was over almost 48 hours when we had people involved in helping, and they stayed there, didn't complain. And many of the people that stayed at the shelter came back with a lot of compliments. And you'd think after spending that much time, they'd be in a bad mood, but they really appreciated the work that was done. But I asked our volunteers, Dan and Iris, to come in so we could say thank you and just acknowledge the work that they do. Everybody else is home safe, and they're warm in their house, and they're willing to come and help out the community, and they did just a super job. So tonight, we'd like to recognize them for their efforts and just say we appreciate the work that you do.
And I've got a couple plaques. We really appreciate the hard work that you've done. And so, it says Volunteer Recognition. I got one for Iris, and I got one for Dan. On January 26, 2014, the National Weather Service issued a blizzard warning for southern Minnesota that includes Steel County. Due to rapidly deteriorating road conditions, many motorists were stranded on Interstate 35 and local roads. We needed a facility to house many of those stranded motorists. The Steel County Emergency Operations Center and the National Guard Armory reopened as the Red Cross Center. The center was opened early Friday morning at 2:00 a.m. and did not close until Saturday evening at 9:00 p.m. Iris Johnson and Dan Richter spent long hours at the armory. Iris and Dan, as mayor and city council members, we recognize and applaud your dedication to our community and Steel County Red Cross. Without dedicated volunteers, Oatana would not be the great community it is today. You exemplify what it means to be a Red Cross volunteer, and we thank you for your service.
Speech.
Thank you very much for that service, and...
I want to say that Mike is...
Go to the mic.
Come up to the mic.
Talking to microphone there, Iris.
Back to the mic. I just want to tell you how much Mike means to... that I think he means to the community in what he's done and how he looks ahead for what we need, and how much I enjoy working with him, and how much I like serving the community and helping them. I've found being at the shelter just one of the best experiences I've had because of the people that came and their attitude, so thank you.
Thank you. And congratulations on that, and I know that we have many more like you in this community, so thank you. With that, we'll move on to... next item on the agenda is the continuation of proposed improvements, 1401 to 2014 Street and Utility Projects. And we'll go to Kyle. With that, I believe, yes?
Good evening. This is the 2014 Street and Utility Project affecting 16th Street Northeast, Hilltop Avenue, Mound Street, Linwood, Meadowview Lane, and then a number of streets for overlay. This was continued at the last council meeting due to further discussions about the alley. The alley is east of Cedar between Cedardale and... no, Oakdale and 18th Street Southwest. We did get together with about four of the property owners. It was four or five of the property owners on the alley and discussed it further. What we are recommending on the alley is that we study that further, remove it from the project for this year's construction, and reevaluate for next year or future times. So that wasn't all of the property owners. We attempted to contact all of them. We also have more information than when we put the original feasibility report or original numbers together. The costs have gotten to be a little bit more than we originally expected, so we'd like to take another... at least another year to work with the property owners there.
So basically, what you're asking for is to withdraw the alley part of this request?
That's my recommendation, and I don't know... I see there's at least a couple of property owners here. I don't know if they had any further...
With that, at 7:05, I will open the public hearing for anyone that interests... is interested in speaking on this, so please come forward and sign in.
Steve Garman, we have a part of the property here, and I agree with their assessment. The initial stuff, it wouldn't have held up, and I agree with what the research they've done. I don't have a problem with it being taken off and moved down the road. My only concern is I don't want to kick down the road and down the road and down the road because it is in bad shape. The reason we're saying... putting it off now is because we want to do it right so it'll last, but I just don't want it out of sight and forgotten about, so...
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? CNN, we'll look for a motion to close the public hearing?
So will.
The motion by Raymond to close the public hearing. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave Burbank. Any further discussion there? Raymond?
Kyle, are you talking about just one year, moving it out, or what's...
Let's hold that question until we close this hearing.
Oh, okay.
And then we've got the council.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now it's council's turn to speak, so...
Kyle, are you planning on moving out just one year, or...
Well, we're... we, like I mentioned, we have a little bit more survey information. There was a drainage issue behind one of the buildings that we want to make sure we properly address. One of the concerns that was brought forth is that it's not a normal alley. The traffic in there is significantly heavier than our typical alley, so we want to work with the property owners and make sure that we're addressing the heavier truck traffic and making sure that that alley lasts once it is fixed. So we are... we're looking at a couple of different options, either increasing the thickness of the bituminous or the possibility of going to concrete. The concrete option is quite a bit more expensive, but...
Would it be on 2015, then, you're saying, or...
I think we would bring it back for next year's...
Just so we don't keep on...
I think that was the plan, is that we just delayed for one year only.
Yeah, and over the course of the next six months, work with the property owners to make sure everybody's comfortable with what we're proposing.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions from the council?
Make a motion, we approve.
We have a motion by Raymond to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Nate Dodson. Any further discussion there? CNN, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved for this year with the removal of the alley. The next item is 1.5.1.2, Resolution 1714, Approved Plans and Order Bids. We will go back to Kyle.
This is simply the resolution authorizing us... approving the plans we've prepared and authorizing us to bid. The current anticipated bid date would be Wednesday, April 30, and we would be bringing it to the council on Tuesday, May 6.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments from the council?
Move to approve.
We have a motion by Greg Schultz to approve. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Brent Svenby. Any further discussion there? CNN, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved also. We'll now move on to the build's financial report, and I will ask Greg to report.
I'll do the recap. Checks over $20,000. First one is $68,293 for 305 LaMond Road. That's flood mitigation acquisition through the DNR grant. $90,515 for 215 LaMond Road. That again is flood mitigation acquisition through a DNR grant. $22,500 to the Oatana Chamber. It's a first half economic development agreement. $26,401 to Central Valley Co-op for fuel purchases. $121,233 to the Southeast Services Cooperative. That's March health insurance premiums. $26,274 to Yocum Oil for fuel purchases, and other expenditures of $145,054, for a total of $500,273. Add to that Section 8 payments of $61,923, for a total of $562,196.
Thank you, Greg. What is council's... which...
Motion to pay the bills. I got a question.
Okay.
Go ahead.
We'll give the motion to... do you have a motion to pay by Kevin? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave Burbank? No.
On fuel, do we get different bids for different things, like the airport is different than city shop? Do we get bids annually for different... I see we got two different companies for fuel. Ones from Yocum and ones from Cannon Valley. Is there a difference between city shop and the airport, or do we bid it as one?
I believe they do bid those separately because of the airport fuel.
Oh, we bid them separately. Is there any reason why not bid them as one? Would that have any feeling that cost wise or...
No.
Two different...
It's a different type of fuel at the airport, yeah.
Different types of fuel. I understand, I understand, but they both handle... No. Well, they don't. Oh, okay.
Okay. Any other questions? CNN, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved. We'll move on to the consent agenda item, which are items all grouped together, such as motions, permit requests, minutes of meetings, et cetera, grouped into one motion. And with that, any... Chair will entertain a motion on the... from the council.
So move, we approve.
We have a motion to approve the council by Raymond Trulson. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Kevin Rainey. Any further discussion on these? CNN, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? These have been approved. We're moving on to the action items now, which are 3.4.1, First Reading of Proposed Ordinance 1.14, Repealing City Code Section 975. With that, we'll go to Mark, I believe.
A citizen pointed out to us that on our... in our ordinance code, we still carried a provision that prohibited the... an individual from carrying a concealed weapon. And in 2004, the legislature adopted the statute that permitted concealed carry with restrictions. And so, and in this instance, the statute is one of the statutes that preempts any contrary local regulation. And so, our current ordinance would not... is contrary to the statute, and it's one of those that would have to defer to the statute.
So you're recommending...
Recommending that we repeal that section of the ordinance code that's contrary to the statute.
Thank you. Mark, Raymond?
What does this do different than we're doing today? It means you can't conserve a concealed weapon certain places? Is that what this is talking about?
What we're doing today is merely repealing the ordinance that was in conflict with the state statute, which allows a person with a permit to carry the weapon in a public place.
Okay.
Nevertheless, you understand that a permit is required.
True. Yeah, I understand that.
As ours was written...
Yeah.
It would not allow anybody to carry. The state did, so we're repealing that part of it. Is that correct?
Correct.
So move, we approve.
We have a motion by Raymond to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Nate Dodson. Any further discussion? CNN, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
This is actually an ordinance.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It will require a roll call.
Okay, I will ask for a roll call. Thank you.
Councilmember Burbank.
Aye.
Rainey.
Aye.
Svenby.
Aye.
Trulson.
Aye.
Dodson.
Aye.
Schultz.
Aye.
Abraham.
Aye. With all ayes, this has been approved to be repealed. And this is the first reading, so we'll have one more at the next council meeting. Then we'll move on to resolutions. 3.5.1, Resolution 1414, authorize 2013 transfer and close funds. So that will go to Rhonda.
Resolution 1414 approves closing and transfer of funds effective December 31 of 2013. There are multiple reasons for these transfers, as explained in the following. Council has indicated a desire to move the funds that have been set aside for the future roof repairs of this building, and also the funds received in the Imprellis settlement from the General Fund to the Capital Projects Fund until needed for the specified capital purposes. Also, the building and inspection department operated the entire 2013 budget year without filling the vacant building inspector position. The community development director has requested that the savings from this vacancy be transferred to the Capital Projects Fund to be used for the future purchase of a vehicle for the inspection department. And thirdly, it is standard practice at the start of each year to establish a debt service fund and a capital projects fund for that year's projects. The assessment activity is generally tracked in the debt service fund. Since no debt was actually issued in 2012, the assessment activity is being transferred to the 2012 Capital Projects Fund, and the debt service fund will then be closed. Staff recommends approval of this resolution.
Thank you, Rhonda. Questions from the council?
I don't know if I really agree with... if we're short a person that says, "I'd like to take those funds and buy a truck." I mean, I think sometimes we'll get people thinking that I can justify doing those kinds of things. I think it should go into some. If there's a need elsewhere, sometimes maybe that isn't really the thing we should pay for, I guess. You know, now they're saying they want to put it to buy a truck. Well, that's me. Maybe we need something else more important than that truck, I guess.
Councilmember, I could address some of this. Troy Klecker has asked for a truck repeatedly in the...
No, I understand.
Previous years in the budget, and I've had to turn him down due to, you know, tough budget times, so...
Thing I may say, if he got habit for me, and somebody said,
Oh, yeah.
"I'll use this money to buy a truck," or something, I'd let somebody go or something.
Right.
You know, I think, you know, we don't want to create a... that type of situation.
But no, this has been a long-established need.
No, I understand, but I'm just saying, if we said we have extra money, well, let's buy this. Maybe there's a better need ultimately in our fleet than that.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Chair will entertain a motion?
Yes, you may.
Approved, approved. Motion by Greg to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave Burbank. Any further discussion now? CNN, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved also. Moving on to Resolution 1614, set date for public hearing. TIF for expansion design... Dyken applied, and with that, we'll go to Troy.
Dyken Applied is proposing an expansion of over 120,000 square feet to their facility at 1,021st Avenue Northwest. The addition would result in adding 40 new jobs. Dyken is requesting tax increment financing to assist in the building addition. The request is for establishing a tax increment financing district for up to nine years. The total increment generated from the project is estimated to be just over $2 million, with a present-day value of $1.46 million. This would be a pay-as-you-go TIF, with the property owner upfunding the cost of the eligible improvements on the property and being reimbursed after the property taxes are paid each year. And you should have a proposed TIF plan in front of you for the project. There are minimal publication costs for establishing the public hearing. There would be consulting fees for the TIF financing, which can be paid by the EDA's consulting budget. Administrative costs can be factored into the TIF plan so that consulting expenses can be reimbursed through the TIF. So staff would recommend adoption of the resolution authorizing and setting the public hearing for April 15.
Thank you. And this is... this motion is just to set the public hearing at this point?
Correct. Just a resolution to set the public hearing for April 15.
Thank you. Raymond?
Troy, you might just want to mention to the public what is that, and where... Barbie don't know the name, or where it's located by the bus company. A lot of people don't...
Yep. Dyken Applied. Used to be Dyken McQuay. Is out in Industrial Park, next to Mendot offices and across the street from McDonald's. They're about 70,000 square foot facility now, and they manufactured... they manufacture commercial industrial HVAC systems.
Thank you. Kevin?
Troy, 40 new jobs. Is that all full-time, or is that a full-time, part-time?
That would be full-time positions.
Thank you.
Raymond?
On the jobs, I just got a question. It seems like we always hear jobs. Does that go with TIF at all, jobs? We're going to have 40 new jobs. You know, we hear that every time we do a TIF. They're going to provide 20 new jobs, or whatever. Does that go with the TIF?
It's not a requirement for tax increment financing. There are some other state incentives that will be assisting them in pursuing that would be tied directly to jobs.
How do we know down two years, they said they're going to do 20 jobs, and they're getting other state funds?
Well, the incentives that are tied specifically to jobs are state incentives in those. We do have to do reporting annually on that, and in some cases, there are clawback provisions if they don't meet those.
Okay.
Any other questions? Chair will entertain a motion?
So move.
Motion by Raymond to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Take Greg's second from Greg. Any further discussion? CNN?
Okay, Les? No, I'd just really like to thank Troy and Greg for their commitment to this project. It wasn't an easy project, and they were really dedicated to make sure this came to Oatana, so thank you.
Thanks, Tom. CNN, others, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved also. Moving on to 5.3.5.3, Resolution 1814, Approved Bid and Plans and Order Bids for 2014 Mineral Springs Road Project, and we'll go to Kyle again.
Les, I'll have to recuse myself from this.
Yes, you do. Thank you. Kyle?
Good evening. This is authorizing preparation of plans and specifications for... or approving plans and specifications and authorizing bids. One thing I noted... want to note in my memo, I had put a proposed amount of $274,460.40 of the estimate... or opinion of cost of $643,685.50 being assessed. That's actually the 50% of the street cost that could be assessed. A couple of things come into play on that, that with the footage on this project would work out to be $63 a foot, which exceeds our 52 maximum, and also includes... there's 1,399.41 feet of Mineral Springs Park. So that's a city-owned property that was used as part of the calculation per foot. The actual number that, if the project goes forward, would be assessed to private property owners is $139,603.88 at the $52 a foot. So in the CIP, we had budgeted $420,000 of city funds for this project and $100,000 of private assessments. Apologize for the misleading numbers here in my memo, but about $140,000 would be assessed to the private property owners.
That's from the $643,000?
Correct. And the city may be assessed for the Mineral Springs Park at about $73,000.
Okay. Nate?
And that was four property owners that would be assessable?
No, there are...
There's eight parcels.
Eight parcels, but how many property owners?
I think it's eight property owners.
Eight property owners.
Separate property owners?
Mm-hmm.
Thirteen parcels, one of which would be the city. We are the single largest property owner there.
Any further questions? Chair will entertain a motion?
I've got another question for... no, I understand there was a split on the council with regard to this project.
No, three, two.
Well, we're all right. It was closed.
Yeah.
And I know two of us were absent. So I guess my question for Kyle would be, I know there was some concern about delaying it to deal with some current property issues. Is it your opinion that we gain anything by waiting a year to resolve any of those issues? Does that... do we have any advantage that would outweigh the increase in costs that we will likely have to bear waiting a year?
I don't know that there would be a significant advantage to the property issues to waiting a year. You know, we're still working with one of the property owners to serve their property with sanitary sewer or not. We do have a lot of concerned property owners along the project about the cost of the assessment. As far as gaining property or having easements or anything, we don't have that type of issue on this project. We do anticipate construction costs going up, but the other side is there's not a... there's a need. Is it a pressing need or not? I guess I'd leave that up to someone else to decide.
Tom?
There's also an issue about a sewer going across to one of the properties that now have a septic system?
Yeah, that's the one property that I...
In the past, hasn't it been common that we delay the overlay of that road for a year and harder to get it to settle?
It's always better to let it settle. Typically, we don't on our reconstruction projects because of access to property. If you... in a perfect world, we would allow that to set for a year before we paved it.
Any questions, comments? Raymond?
I think if we wait a year, another year or two, we're just going to see costs going up, and it's one of the really needed, I think, to help out some septic problems there, and also a lot of things. I really think we need to go with it this year, so...
Chair will entertain a motion?
So move, we accept it.
Motion by Raymond to accept to proceed with this?
Second.
Second by Brent Svenby. Any further discussion? CNN, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Appears to be approved in full, so we'll move forward with that. Thank you. And now we'll move on to miscellaneous items. 3.61, a bylaw change to the Fire Fighters Relief Association, and we'll go to...
You can go to me.
Chris?
Yes. Thank you, Les. As you know, we had our work session prior to the council meeting where we met with members of the Fire Relief Association and reviewed the changes that were proposed. The bylaw changes before you do a number of things. One is increase the base sum amount for our firefighters from $44.50 to $5,400 per year. Also cleans up and clarifies some language, and I think protects the city going forward to kind of even out the ups and downs of requests for increases. So some good changes there, and staff would recommend approval. Todd, I know is here if you have any further questions.
Thank you, Chris. Questions from the council? Raymond?
I've been involved with the fire department for 40 years. I can't say enough of what they've accomplished when I was in business, working for a company of the times I needed calls, or... and you look at the little investment we make, a lot of town... calls or, and you look at the little investment we make, a lot of towns are looking at us for some reason with the way we organize and the way we run our ship down there. And I give an A plus to those people down there that make us a safer community and I, I really, really supported this decision tonight, so.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Just want to thank Todd for explaining it quite well to us during our study session tonight. So thanks, Todd.
Thank you. Any further? Now I'm looking for a motion.
So move.
Motion by Raymond to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Kevin Rainey. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this has been approved. Good luck with it. Thank you. And with that, we'll, we'll move on to public comment. If anyone would like to speak on issues not on the agenda, please come forward to the microphone and sign in. Seeing none, we'll move on to council comment and we'll start with Dave Burbank.
Nothing from Ward 3 tonight.
Nothing. Kevin?
Nothing from Ward 4 tonight.
Nothing this evening.
Raymond?
Nothing tonight.
Nate?
Nothing to add.
Greg?
Ward 2 is very quiet tonight.
Ward 2. How about the mayor?
Well, seeing they have nothing to add, I'll just take a little bit of time. I was privileged to go out to Washington DC this last week and attend American Public Power Rally for the utility side of it. I'm on a public policy committee. And there are three issues that they wanted to make sure our representatives heard was tax exempt financing. It's the same issue that I have with the city, tax exempt bonds. The House Ways and Means Committee proposed a 10% surtax on interest on municipal bonds. The good news I have to report is that all our representatives and senators from Minnesota do not support that. So hopefully they have enough votes on their side to protect tax exempt financing for cities and utilities. Grid security was a issue for the utilities, cybersecurity and grid security. It doesn't take too much to topple the electric regime if something goes wrong with it. So they want to make sure that they have information sharing from the federal government to the industry and HR 2624 was the bill that will authorize that. And our delegation's in, in support of that. And then carbon dioxide regulation, there is a big push in order to put such regulations on new coal plants that the technology hasn't even been proven yet. And some people asked, can you create it or can, again, I go buy it someplace? And they say no. So that's going to be a long discussion item that we'll move forward. National League of Cities, there are five issues support marketplace fairness. And what that means is that we are losing revenue on sales that go over the internet that we can't collect taxes on. And so they want to make sure that all states have the authority to be able to collect sales tax on property that is purchased on the internet and then delivered to Minnesota. Protect municipal bonds, the same issue as utilities have. The cities all support. Fix the nation's broken immigration system. It may be difficult to have any regulations go forward this year. It's still a party policy issue that the Democrats want and the Republicans are working very, very hard to at least draw some information together on it. Strengthen the nation's education pipeline and support community resilience. The picture is if it's a flood happens, as Mike knows, there's no place to get any money short term without having to go through FEMA and everything. And this is a way that would have a pot of money available that you could draw from in the immediate future that you wouldn't have to go through FEMA immediately to find that money. And the other thing I was privileged to, as a public policy committee officers, Don, Dan Altek, he's special assistant to the President of Energy and Climate Change. And his job is to put together a proposal to President Obama on the nation's long-term energy needs. And nothing was really designed on what that policy was going to look like. So we had a little time with him and some lobbyists from American Public Power to sit down and try and gather some information to see where that goes forward. So all in all, it was a busy time.
Thank you.
Tom, are you an officer on the national level for that? Aren't you on the?
I'm an officer for the Public Policy Committee for American Public Power. And I'm also on the Economic Development Ward for the National League of Cities.
I thought you were.
Thank you. Chris?
Just one item. Reminder that the Human Rights Commission is sponsoring a Community Intersections Program on Thursday, March 20th. 6:30 will be some light refreshments. The program starts at 7:00 and it's entitled Speak Out. And it deals with how language can sometime, you know, lead to some discrimination and some unintended consequences. Also, it helps you if you're in a situation and you're experiencing, you're observing someone else being maybe not appropriate and gives you some ideas and strategies for dealing with that kind of situation. So we would urge you all to attend if your, if your calendar allows.
Where's it at, Chris?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's at the Art Center. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
Nope.
We do have, just a reminder that next Tuesday night, the 25th at 6:00 PM, we do have the Chris's performance review. And if you don't have a form to fill out, I do have some extras. So if you have a question, please give me a call. But just remember to, next Tuesday night at 6:00 PM.
Where are we meeting at tonight?
I think we're either upstairs.
Wherever you want. We've met downstairs before.
Yeah, we've gone, met down in the lower.
Big lunchroom area?
Yep. Okay. Anything else? Looking for a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Motion by Kevin to adjourn, second by Raymond. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned.